I don't see any. I'm just a bit busy back here, so. I'm trying to follow them. I need to pay those people this morning. It's a good thing to have you on. God, my family's. How many couples? I don't know. And they're actually. Because they're redoing it. Looks a lot better than I had. They got some tables out there. All they got is gonna put some tables out there. Where the parking space already they moved. Yeah. And add some. Pandora's. Now they're fixing the. Yeah, we'd open things.
Yeah.
I've been. 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 I've been.
You would please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance and invocation. Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Lori, thank you for today. We thank you for another opportunity to come and to work in your name, taking care of county business. Lori, just pray that you'll be watch over this meeting and lead us and guide us and give us the wisdom we need to make decisions that are best for the people of Walton County. Praise to you. Look over as we leave and take us home safely. In Jesus' name. Amen. Real quick before we get going, call to order. Just a reminder, if you haven't already, please either turn your cell phones off or put them on silent to minimize interruptions. I don't think we'll get to nine o'clock tonight. If we do get to nine o'clock, we're gonna close the meeting at nine. Any item is not heard, before then, we'll be moved to the next meeting. Mr. Dyas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a couple announcements tonight, and that is, we have two requests to continue. The first request to continue is Treasure Trove Estates, Phase Two and Three. The request is to continue to disseminate 2016 Planning Commission meeting at five o'clock at this location.
We need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Abear, and second, Mr. Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And then the second request to continue is for the Butler Mini Storage Small Scale Amendment, which is number, let's see, it's the fifth item on the quasi judicial. Again, a request to continue the Butler Mini Storage Small Scale Amendment to disseminate 2016 at five o'clock at this location.
Need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Second.
Motion, Ms. Horn and Mr. Abear, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes our announcements.
Okay, let's go ahead and.
At the minutes?
Yeah. Everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? Any questions about the minutes? I do have one question, and that's.
I actually had a question. I thought Mr. Smith was the chairman that night. Did I? Does anybody remember? Can we, let's just move them to the next month, because I'm almost certain he was. Lee, you didn't chair the meeting?
No, I did.
Okay.
He did chair.
Yeah, Mr. Smith did chair. So that would need to be corrected. So why don't we move them to the next month for adoption? Is that okay?
That sounds good. I'd rather do them correct.
No, we'll just move it to the next year.
Okay. Legislative items.
Yes, sir. First item is Chapter 11 Ordinance. This is a request to amend the Walton County Land Development Code in regards to infill proposals, and I'll have Mr. Carpenter come up and present this case to the Planning Commission.
Good evening, Commissioners. Matt Carpenter for the Planning Department. This is actually a pretty simple change to the Land Development Code that will make some significant improvements in our processing and reduce the burden of this simple process on our public.
That's a good thing.
We are proposing to add six words to the code. And this is an amendment to Land Development Code, Section 11.01.02, subsection C.4. The new language will presently read, "A plan shall be designated as major development if it involves one or more of the following." And number four is infill proposals in the neighborhood planning areas. We're proposing to change that last line to infill proposals other than minor replat or lot splits in the neighborhood planning areas.
I like that.
It's a good thing.
Yes, it is.
For our public and for our staff, and it will greatly reduce the cost of this simple process that only applies in the neighborhood infill land development or land use designated category.
Okay. Any Commissioners have questions, staff?
They've worked very hard on it. I'll make a motion.
Well, we need to hear public comment.
Oh, okay.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Nobody has signed up.
Appreciate you.
Nobody has signed up to speak. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this item? Don't see anybody, so we'll close that. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Ms. Horn and seconded by Mr. Perry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the last item we have for legislative is the Coastal Dune Lake Protection Zone Land Development Code amendments. As you may recall, this is a result of the County Commission and the mediation regarding the comprehensive plan related to coastal dune lake protection zone. This is the last part of that process where we are actually amending the code to reflect the changes that the board approved a few months ago. So again, I'll ask Mr. Carpenter to come up and give the board the details on this application.
Matt Carpenter for the Planning Department. This is an amendment to Chapter Four of the Land Development Code. Get to the right section here. And it mirrors the amendment to the comprehensive plan that y'all recommended approval just a few weeks back, and the County Commission subsequently adopted. We didn't have any additional challenges, and now we're moving forward with amending the Land Development Code to match the comprehensive plan. It is, by and large, exactly the same language you saw, slightly formatted differently to match the Land Development Code formatting, but the language and all of the policies that you saw in the comprehensive plan amendment. Just a couple of quick highlights. Essentially, increases the buildable area from 25% to 50%. Excuse me, 25% to 40%. The pervious area to 50% and requires retention of existing native vegetation and those areas that remain pervious to be at least 60% of the site. It promotes low-impact stormwater type development, and we think it makes some significant improvements in our process and our ability to approve permits along the coastal dune lakes in addition to protecting those lakes. They're very important to our county.
Okay.
If you've got some specific questions about the language, I'd be happy to address those.
Commissioners?
I know this has to go to the County Commission for them to vote on. After that, how long will it be before it's actually implemented?
Well, we're actually, we got permission from administration and the county attorney to go ahead and start using this new language, because it mirrors the language that's already been approved in the comprehensive plan, since it is a relaxation in a sense. We're already using the language, but it is scheduled for first reading on November 22nd at the BCC and then adoption on December 13th at the BCC.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. We have one member of the public has signed up, Jason Carter.
Yeah, hello. My name is Jason Carter. Is that all I say to get started? I've not done this before. State my address.
Yeah, you just.
Okay.
Just talk to us.
Yeah, one concern I have is that the language has changed from what the approved comp plan was and the settlement to this amendment that's in front of you guys. There's a clause that was added on the setbacks, and it says it only applies to lots that existed before 1996, and I think that dramatically changes the meaning of what the settlement had. I'm actually, have a specific property in mind that the county did a lot split, and it's an approved lot split. This lot was created, you know, in the formal process and approved by the county in 2004, and so whereas I thought this settlement provided relief for this situation, this new language makes it where that relief is no longer available to me. So I think that it kind of changes quite dramatically the meaning of the approved comp plan that was just put in place and of the settlement. So, you know, I think that needs to be looked at again. I could understand if going forward, you'd wanted to have a hundred-foot setback on any new properties that were created, but properties that were created between 1996 and today, you know, lost their chance to get any kind of relief over this settlement. And I think the whole intent and idea behind the settlement was to make it so you could build on your property, as it is now. This particular lot is unbuildable with the setback that would be required. Now, if you could do the language in the settlement and have the reduced setback, which is 25% of your lot, it works perfectly, but the fact that it changed from everybody to everybody only before 96 makes this property useless. You know, it's a property that's been in existence since 2004. You know, property taxes have been paid on it since then, and I think this changes things a lot from that settlement.
I know there's a hardship case mentioned in there where you can go to the zoning board of adjustments, some stuff like that.
I think that's only limited to going from 50% to 53% on the coverage. I don't think that applies to the setback, as I read it.
And you're talking about paragraph 10, is that correct?
Yeah, there was a sentence put in there that did not exist in the comp plan nor the settlement that says, or not even a sentence, a clause, that says, "Four lots of record in existence prior to November of 1996."
We'll look at the language.
Okay.
For the County Commission. Thank you.
So you'll address that for the County Commission?
Yeah, I'll see what the change is and make sure we're being consistent with the settlement agreement that was reached.
All right. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, Commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve with the county attorney looking into that situation for lots prior to 1996.
You get that, Karen?
Can you just repeat that? Motion to approve.
Is it mic on? I can barely hear.
Thought it was. Can you hear?
No.
A little better.
It's gotta be up to be.
It'll be up.
Can you hear now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, motion to approve with the county attorney looking into the language for those lots prior to 1996.
In paragraph 10.
Paragraph 10.
Do we have a motion on Ms. Horn? Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Perry? Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the rest of the items are quasi judicial, need to be sworn in.
Yes, sir.
Anyone who anticipates testifying or speaking to the board regarding any item on the quasi judicial docket, would you please stand and raise your right hand? Thank you. To each of you solemnly swear or affirm, the testimony you're about to give before this board will be the truth.
I do.
Thank you. And if you would, when you come to the podium, would you say your name? And it's very helpful if you'll spell your last name and tell us that you have been sworn. Commissioners, any of you received any ex parte contacts regarding, or had any ex parte contacts regarding any item on the quasi judicial docket?
No, sir.
Everybody answers in the negative, so we are free to go.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Chairman, the first item on our agenda for quasi judicial is Chiringo. This is a project that is located in Greton Beach. I'll ask Bob Baronti from our staff to brief the Planning Commission on this item.
Good evening. As you see in your packet, the current existing conditions have the parking currently up against the building. What the applicant is proposing is to pull the parking back towards the street and make a open area with, and plant oak trees and have bike racks between the oak trees. And then he's also requesting to add an ADA walkway to it. It's pretty much, that is what they're asking. They're just asking to pull back, create an open space, so their creatures can sit while they wait to go into the restaurant. And we have representatives from EC, I'm here if you have any questions.
Okay. Commissioners, do you all have any questions on this item?
The only question I have is the wetland area that's close to the AE zone. Is that a flood area there on the far east side?
As far as I know, there are no. Tom, Paul, D.T.L., T.Y.
Okay.
ECO, and I have Ms. Horn. As far as I know, there are no wetlands. This is up in Greton.
Just wanted to ask.
Okay.
Any other questions? So this isn't change, it's just moving parking spaces? It's not adding any parking spaces or making no other outdoor changes as far as dining or any of that kind of stuff?
No. And you can also see in the staffer report, we were pretty clear that if they went to add anything, they would have to go back through the complete process to change their development order.
Okay. Very good. Yeah. Beth, can I have anything you want to say?
No, sorry, I think we've covered everything. It's just moving the parking, and that's all we're doing. Trying to make the place look better and move the traffic closed.
Okay. We'll go ahead and.
You say they're not adding any parking spaces?
No.
No, that's all they're doing.
Just moving them. We have no more questions. We'll head and open the public portion of the hearing. One person signed to speak, Tom.
That's me, sir.
That's you? Okay. You made that easy for me then, didn't you? All right. Anybody else wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the hearing. Commissioners, we have a, any discussion or a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Perry and seconded by Mr. Abear. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, next item on our agenda is the Bayou Breeze Warehouse. This is a project located on Kennedy 83 North. Again, I'll ask Bob Brontif from our staff to come and brief the Planning Commission on this item.
This is a major development order application submitted by Barnhill, Barnhill, and Barnhill, which have representatives here to answer your questions, seeking to build a warehouse office development in a future land use of a business park on 9.75 plus or minus acres, and the project is located on County Road 83 and identified with that parcel number. All comment, external comments have been addressed, and staff would like to recommend consideration of this parcel. It's not going to be a true warehouse. It's going to be a quasi office and like a rental, a rental center.
Again, Tom, Paul, D.T.L., I have been sworn. Coastal Equipment Rental, that's now located on 393. This is their parcel. They're going to move their building, their business to that parcel. So it is warehouse. I mean, they're going to store stuff, but truth of the matter is, they're going to store stuff so you walk through, take a look, and say, "I'll buy that." So it's, it's, it's an equipment rental facility is what it is.
Why are we doing this as a warehouse? I guess that confuses me a little bit.
Part of the problem is dealing with parking and traffic, there is no category that you can work it into other than warehouse.
Okay.
In terms of trying to work that through, of what do we call it? It's partial warehouse. There is a small retail area where they sell parts to lawnmowers and things like that, but it's really, it's storage is what it is, but there's no storage category in parking or traffic.
Equipment storage and stuff in it.
Yes.
Okay.
They have also, through the process, worked to provide access to the mosquito control districts so they can get back to their ditch. So as I said in my presentation, that all external comments have been addressed. Just like to make a recommendation to consider this.
Anybody have any questions for staff? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
You have anything else to say? Are you done?
No, sir.
All right. We had nobody, just open the public portion of the hearing. Nobody signed up. Is there anybody who wishes to address this issue? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Abear and seconded by Mr. Roberts.
I just have one question.
Oh, okay.
Tom, what's the construction material to be used on the exterior of the building?
I believe it's going to be typical metal.
Metal warehouse building.
It's a metal building, kind of like our church.
Are the doors going to be closed or?
Yeah. Oh, actually, I've seen the plans on that.
From 98, will you have visibility?
Yeah, yeah.
Other words, what's it going to look like?
Brian, I've been sworn in.
Brian, what's your last name?
Barnhill.
Okay.
It's going to be, it's pretty much metal on the outside. There very well could be a stucco sign at the very, very top. If you notice what coastal equipment rental looks like, it's exactly what it's going to look like, almost to the T. It's going to be a metal building with a sign out front that says coastal equipment rental. It's going to have the big glass doors, probably the double glass doors for the entrance, and the warehouse doors will always be closed unless there's trucks coming through.
You really won't have visibility from 98, will you?
No, not at all. Not at all.
You won't see. It's three of them.
And plus, that road actually ends too, so there's really not a lot of traffic coming through there, unless you go to that church.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? We do have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is the Howell abandonment. I'll ask Tim Brown from our staff to come up and present this application.
Good evening. Tim Brown with Planning and Development. This is a petition for abandonment application submitted by Jenkins Engineering requesting the abandonment of a portion of the Robert Avenue right-of-way. It's got a future land use of rural village. It's located on the south side of State Road 20, west of Wildwood Street, so it's north of the bay. That's pretty much it as far as the presentation. As usual, Public Works is not in favor of abandoning the property, and there is, it's not clear on the map, but on the west side of this, there's an existing canal, so I mean, it's, there's water on the west side. So unless they build a bridge, you cannot cut through, you cannot continue Robert Avenue through unless you build a bridge over that canal. I will answer any questions the board may have.
You got a question?
Go ahead, Ms. Horn.
What size lots are these?
This area is point one, one-tenth of an acre, point one.
So it's about 50 foot wide by 100?
Well, it's not actually a lot. It's a portion of the Robert Avenue right-of-way, so there's lots that front it, but this isn't, there's no parcel number or anything associated with this parcel. It's not a lot, but it's point one acres.
No, that's not it.
Okay.
I got a question, though. There's a piece, obviously, across the canal or whatever that is to the, I guess it'd be to the east.
It'd be to the west.
The west?
Uh-huh.
Because the road goes right up to it and stops, so they're going to want to abandon that one, too?
I, we haven't gotten a request. I don't know. Because that is usable. I mean, the county could continue that road if they wanted to, and of course, you could go across the canal, but I just don't really see the county building a bridge there. But all I can say, Mr. Perry, is we don't have a request to abandon it.
Yet.
Yet. Yet.
Yeah, the reason I ask is I figured this will start it, so.
Yeah. That's possible. That's absolutely possible, but at this point.
And you don't anticipate the county ever needing to come through there for any reason?
Well, honestly, I don't know. I mean, Public Works says it could be reused for drainage or some other purpose, so they're not in favor of abandoning it, but I mean.
That's standard.
Yeah, that's, they always say that. But whether, I mean, it's so small, point one acres, I don't know if the county could do anything with that or not. I really don't. I mean, it possibly could be, you know, a stormwater area in the future.
If the board chooses to abandon this, the property will be divided along the center line, and will go to the adjacent property owners. In this particular case, there are three adjacent lot owners. Public Works typically always objects to any petition for abandonment, because we may need that area for future stormwater improvements.
Yeah, that's right. When it's right-of-way, they normally, half of it goes one way and half the other.
So three people would split one-tenth of an acre?
In this case, yes.
Until the next, the other side comes and asks for abandonment, too?
But then they're not, they've got the canal in between, so those same people wouldn't get a portion of that. It would be different.
It wouldn't be the same people, it'd be different people.
Yeah, it'd be different people.
Right.
But they, you're right, it'd still be half and half.
Right.
Do you have a question, Mr. Abbott?
It's been answered. Thank you.
Anybody else have some questions for staff? Thank you.
Good evening. Scott Jenkins with Jenkins Engineering. Ms. Howell's here. She's the applicant also on this. I just wanted to ask for some clarification. The area that you were asking about whether or not they would abandon also, was that?
This is the side, this is the plaza of the Tasso that's here now. The area that we're talking about is actually this portion of the right-of-way here. Are you talking about on this side?
Yes, that's what I was talking about.
Yeah, I doubt.
Because the road doesn't go all the way down to the end of the canal, to enter the canal.
It goes very close. It actually turns into a driveway at that point, but it goes almost to the water. So that is the access, so I don't think that would ever be abandoned.
Okay.
Because that is used on this side. The area that we're talking about, it's a little bit better, is this area here, Ms. Howell, this property, and this is Longwood Road that provides access to everything along here. Robert Drive comes here. Here's where the pavement ends, and then it becomes a driveway for these two areas back here. So I doubt that one would be abandoned. This is the canal that we're talking about, and it actually does have boat traffic, I don't believe it or not. So the area in question here will actually be utilized if the county decides to abandon it to improve a drain system. It's a system out there. This area has no central water or sewer, or no central sewer, it does have water out here, so everything's on a separate system, and they would like to make some improvements to the existing towns and districts that I do, and improve their separate system in this area if possible. And we do have a couple letters of support from the adjacent neighbors here that I'll give to.
Tim.
The clerk.
Are these the neighbors that would lift that abandonment?
Yeah, one of them is, the one directly to the south, and the other one is an adjacent neighbor that's just on the other side. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, these are a letter, first letters from Vincent and Liza Gollings. It looks like it's dated November 7, 2016. We'll mark that as petition as Exhibit 1, and the second letter's dated November 2, 2016, from Bruce and Kathy Abernathy, and we'll mark it as petition as Exhibit 2, and I recommend you accept it. And we'll mark it as petitioner's exhibit two, and I recommend you accept it in the end.
Please do.
Thank you.
Again, the area in question is here. It's about a tenth of an acre or so, and it will be split here, this portion will go to the north, this portion will go to the south, and it will primarily be used to try to correct some self-explanations. Do you have any answer, any other questions you guys may have? Don't anticipate it would ever be used by Public Works. We typically make a call, because they say that they don't recommend it, and I'll normally call and say, "Do you really care?" And then they'll normally say, "That's just our boilerplate answer," so in this case.
Any other questions for applicant? Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Has nobody signed up to speak on this item? Is there anybody who wishes to speak? We'll close the public portion of the hearing. Commissioners?
I'll make a motion to accept.
We have a motion on Ms. Horn, and second by Mr. Roberts to accept. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the last item on the agenda is Santa Rosa Retreat, small-scale amendment. I'll ask Mr. Carpenter to come up and brief the Planning Commission on this item.
Thank you, Commissioners. Matt Carpenter for the Planning Department. This is the Santa Rosa Retreat, small-scale amendment. They're requesting to amend the future land use designation from neighborhood infill to low-density residential on approximately two and a half acres. It's approximately three-tenths of a mile east on Seacraft Drive from Highway 393, and is adjacent to other similar parcels that this board has considered in the last three to four months. I'll turn it over to the agent.
Good evening. Scott Jenkins again with Jenkins Engineering, representing the applicant. As Matt kind of explained to you guys, this is an area that is off of Louisville Lane. We've done several projects in the area. The portion in question is this parcel here, two and a half acres. It currently has a future land use designation of infill, which allows up to eight...